Chapter thirty A, Section eighteen, and the Governor's March fifteenth, two thousand and twenty order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Sturbridge Planning Board will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information and the general guidelines for remote participation can be found on For this meeting, members of the public who wish to listen and or watch the meeting either online via the town's on-demand video broadcast, on cable television on Channel one ninety-one, or dial into the meeting at seven seven four three zero four one four five five. Enter one four two eight pound for the meeting number and one two three four five for the access code. This phone number is only active for the public during public meetings. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event that we are unable to do so despite best efforts, we will post audio and or video recordings, transcript, or other comprehensive record of the proceedings on the town's website as soon as possible after the meeting. All members of the planning board are present. The first item will be the approval of the minutes of March ninth. Then we have an approved-not-required request for five six six Haynes Street, Route fifteen, from Silver Tree Realty. Following that, we have at six thirty-five, a public hearing, a site plan review for five oh one Main Street. The town of Sturbridge is submitting a request to approve a parking lot on that area. After that, we'll have the codification update, then the town planner update, then old and new business, and then attorney. Has everyone had an opportunity to review the minutes of March ninth?
Uh-huh.
Are there any questions, comments, or changes? If not, can I have a motion to approve the minutes as submitted?
So moved.
Okay, Russell, thank you. A second?
Sue, second.
Thank you, Sue. Okay, Sue, how do you vote?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Russ?
Yes.
Dane?
Yes.
Mike? I abstain, I wasn't at the meeting.
Okay, Mike abstains. Jeff?
I additionally abstain, I wasn't at the meeting.
Abstain, that's right. And I will approve, I vote yes. Very good. So Jane, we have next the A and R for Silver Tree Realty. Do you want to go over that?
Yep, I will. I'll just have Janay put it up on the screen. All right, so this is a plan for Silver Tree Realty. It may look familiar because you've endorsed this plan previously and then they didn't have a buyer for the lot, so they recombined it in the remaining land. So this plan is just carving off Lot Three and the remaining land, and both Lot Three and the remaining land meet the requirements, so I would recommend the board endorse the plan submitted.
Very good. Sue, do you have any questions on it?
No questions, thank you.
Chris? Uh, no, no questions. Russ?
No questions.
Okay, thank you. Dane?
No.
Hey, Mike?
Uh, no questions, no.
Uh, Jeff?
No questions.
And I don't have any questions. Okay, could I have a motion then to endorse the A and R?
So moved. Sue?
Thank you. Second? Second. Chris? Hey, Chris, thank you. Sue, how do you vote?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Russ?
Yes.
Dane?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Uh, Jeff?
You want to go with that? Can you give it to Pete?
I vote yes. Very good. Okay, I believe it's past six thirty-five, so the next item is the public hearing for the site plan review at five oh one Main Street. Sue, would you like to read the public hearing notice?
Yes. In accordance with the provisions of Massachusetts Department of Law, Chapter forty-eight, Section eleven, the planning board will hold a public hearing virtually on Tuesday, March twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-one, at six thirty-five P M. on the application of Town of Sturbridge three zero eight Main Street, Sturbridge, Massachusetts, zero one five six six. The applicant requests site plan approval as required by Chapter twenty-five of the Sturbridge planning bylaws to construct a public parking lot on a previously developed point five three acre lot to provide additional parking for existing Main Street businesses. A proposed six-foot-high fence provides a buffer to the residential use to be used. The property location is five zero one Main Street, Sturbridge, Massachusetts, zero one five six six.
Very good, thank you very much. Jane, do you want to explain what this is about?
Yes, so I've just, Pete, I've given you permission to be the presenter if you want to get yourself set up while I give the board an overview.
Sure.
All right, thanks. So this, as the board is aware, our commercial tourist district plan and our master plan both called for the creation of parking areas in the commercial tourist district to serve the existing businesses, and then also for potentially for trail use as well. So last year, an R F C was put out and we received a proposal for the land at five oh one Main Street. This is where the former motel was there, and it was really in disrepair, it was really a blighted area for some time. So luckily, town meeting approved the purchase of that land, the buildings were taken down, and C H A was retained by Robin. Robin is here this evening, our facilities coordinator, Robin Travish. And they were retained to do the design for a new parking lot that would serve the commercial tourist district area, and actually, in the future, it will provide some connections to trails being built on the riverland. And this is in the commercial tourist district, as I've mentioned. It's also in the groundwater protection district, however, in this case, we didn't need to go through the special permit process because the amount of impervious is actually decreasing from the existing developed conditions. Pete Parent from C H A is here this evening, as is Robin Travish, our facilities coordinator, and they will go through the plans. I guess the last thing I should mention is Conservation Commission has already approved this, so they've acted as the stormwater authority in this case. The stormwater management system has been reviewed and approved. And actually, I did, in your packets, you'll see also the specifications for the benches and trash receptacle and lighting fixtures, and I did review them for consistency with commercial tourist district revitalization plan. We did send out the plans for review from all the departments and no concerns were noted. I think maybe one of the biggest issues that came up, and it's not even a big issue, is the chief of police asked that we look at maybe surveillance for the parking lot when it's completed. So Robin has agreed to work with the I T coordinator on that. So with that, I'll turn it over to Pete, Robin, and actually Jeff Bridges as well.
Good evening. Pete Parent, the C H A, as Jane mentioned, with the engineers on the project. So this is an existing parcel that had been previously developed on the south side of Route twenty, directly across the street from a strip mall that I think has a pizza place and maybe a bank, and it's next door on the east side here, there's a residential development, and there's a restaurant, I believe, on the west side. So basically, we're taking the existing lot and we're going to install about twenty-five parking spaces to support the businesses on site, and as Jane mentioned, to the south here, there's a future connection to a trail system that the town is working on. We're providing landscape plantings on the west side to screen the commercial property, and then on the east side, we have the six-foot-high fence. We've got a couple of catch basins to collect storm water and provide some pretreatment, and then we've got a larger rain garden here that's been heavily planted to provide water quality treatment for the new runoff. But as Jane mentioned, we're meeting peak flow attenuation by simply reducing the amount of impervious area on the site. I'm happy to answer any questions, but I think it's reasonably straightforward.
Okay, thank you. Sue, do you have any questions?
Yes, the fact that you've arrived at twenty-five parking spots, and I see that there's one A D A parking spot available, is that correct?
Correct.
And the size of the parking, parking spot spaces?
They're nine by eighteen spaces, but we've provided a twenty-six-foot-wide drive aisle to give a little bit more maneuverable space there.
Okay. All right, and the other thing I wanted to add, is it appropriate that only one A D A parking spot be available, or should we have more?
So one space for twenty-five spaces is the recommendation from a building code perspective. Certainly, you know, there's opportunity here, you can share the hatched area for two adjacent accessible spaces, so you could certainly make this space an accessible space to add to if that's something the town wanted to do, but you're only required to have the one based on the total number of spaces from a building code perspective.
Okay, and I see the location of the A D A. It's, no, that's correct, never mind. I would suggest we have more than one in our municipal parking. That's just a suggestion. The other thought I was having, what's, can you explain to me the rain garden?
Certainly, so the rain garden is basically, okay, it's just a shallow depression that's going to be constructed with a layer of impervious material that's going to be planted with native bushes and flowers. So the rain water is going to be collected by the catch basins in the parking lot here. What's not collected by the catch basins will sheet flow, this portion of the parking lot doesn't have curb. So, you know, these catch basins will collect the majority of the flow, deep-some catch basins with flooded outlets to correct as much trash and sand and debris that we can before we discharge the rain garden. And then, in small storms, the rain garden will, you know, fill up partially and infiltrate the water into the ground. The plants then take up the nutrients and pollutants that are the storm water and convert it to things that, you know, the plants can use, and, you know, treat the water that way. In higher-flow, you know, design storm events, the rain garden will flood completely and then overtop via this spillway here and flow towards the wetland. But in the vast majority of the storms, you know, ninety percent of the rainfall events that you have, the full volume of the runoff will be collected in this wetland, I mean, this rain garden.
Okay.
And will infiltrate into the ground.
Okay, thank you. I just wasn't familiar with the term and how it was used. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Okay, Sue?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, great. Chris?
Uh, no, I am also.
Okay, Russ?
Uh, just a couple, couple of things, uh, on the, coming in and going out, should we have a painted arrow on the driveway coming in and out? And my next question may be for Jeff. If I can discuss any signage there with regard to no overnight parking? I'm just concerned that people are going there, parking the car, staying there for weeks or months, or...
Yeah, we'll just have-
Is there any discussion on that?
No, but we'll probably have to work with the chief on that, you know, put up some signs and monitor what's going on over there.
Just a suggestion on that end.
No, that's a good idea.
I just thought an arrow, uh, on the driveway going in, a painted arrow, white arrow coming in and going out, just to avoid a little confusion, that's all. Open for discussion.
Okay, Russ, thank you. Dane?
Thank you, Charlie. I have a couple of questions. First one is snow storage. I assume it's going to go downhill towards the rain garden and just get pushed over either that little bit of curb where the parking spaces are, or the, I guess the flush curb doesn't help you there because you have a guide rail in the way. But do you have any concerns with snow storage and the rain garden?
Uh, no, the plants that we selected are hardy enough to handle that, and they're reasonably salt tolerant, so there shouldn't be any issues with that.
Gotcha. Um, I don't know if this is a question for K E A, but the public parking sign up at the front, I'm curious if that's going to be designed in the same format as the other Sturbridge-style signs that we have around town for consistency.
Yes, Jane, if they would be, we've already discussed that, that we'll use one of our wayfinding signs, that design, and actually, to answer Russell's question, we can probably do an enter-only and exit-only signs with the striping as well to match the black and white signs.
Perfect. And if another accessible parking space was added, do you see any challenges with the topography, or do you think that could be accommodated?
Yeah, we're not that steep, so yeah, it would need to be re-rated slightly from what we've got here, obviously, but I don't see any issue with that being able to be accommodated.
Gotcha. And then for the size of the rain garden, did you say that's sized to hold the one-hundred year storm?
No, it'll, it'll hold ninety percent of the rainfall events, and ninety percent of the rainfall events are one inch or less, is typical guidance. So while it seems like we get these big storms more often, and we are, it's still tracking that the, from a volume standpoint, ninety percent of our precipitation comes in rainfall events that are one inch or less. That's kind of that first flush design that we use for water quality treatment, is dealing with-
Right, capture the, the rain garden volume as size to capture the entire one inch, or ninety percent of the one inch?
The entire one inch.
Gotcha. And then in larger storms, when that's overtop, I see you have what looks like a spillway, that rectangle there.
Yes.
Is that going to be finished or reinforced in any way to prevent washout?
It'll just be vegetated. Based on the calculations we did, the velocities coming over that are going to be such that we don't need any hard armoring for that kind of treatment.
Okay, so you're not afraid about any rilling or deterioration of the rest of that natural slope down the property or off?
Yeah, I think, you know, we've got some vegetation proposed there, and based on the velocity, so we shouldn't have any issue with that.
All right, those are all my questions, Charlie, thank you.
Thank you, Dane. Mike?
Uh, no questions, Charlie, no.
Okay, Jeff?
No questions.
Okay. Now, regarding the second handicap space, would the board consider looking at that later to see if it's needed, or is it something you'd like to go forward with at this time? In other words, you know, the two spaces are almost, you know, ten percent of the, you know, capacity. Would it be, you know, good to see what the utilization is, to see if we actually need another handicap space?
I think it's best to, Charlie, this is Sue.
Oh, I know, Jane, all right, good.
I'd like to see it right from the start because I think that there is that need in to support the municipal parking lot. I believe that that would be serving our residents if we put two in.
Jane, did you have something you wanted to say?
Yeah, I would actually, with all respect to Sue, I would actually recommend that we monitor the parking lot for a while. We have to remember that this is extra parking for the businesses that are there, and all the businesses do have handicap accessible parking spaces, so I think for the most part, if these are used, it might be used to access the trails, and, you know, maybe we can do some visual surveys during the day or even in the evening, or, you know, if we're having surveillance, or we could do some questionnaires that people could return once we're using it. But I just would hate to see, for two reasons, I would hate to designate it and then it's not used, number one, or I would hate to have people park there that shouldn't be parking there, and then we're in a position where we need to ticket them. So, I mean, I think that it may be necessary, but I would really like to monitor it. It does meet the requirements of what's required in terms of handicap parking spaces, so that's just my thought on that.
Charlie, if I may?
You're going, sure, go ahead.
If the, as I mentioned, the grade would have to be flattened out to accommodate an accessible parking, but it's possible that it's designed now to be a bit flatter, to be accessible, but not striped, so if a need is found in the future, we don't need to do any earthwork.
I think that's a good idea.
Okay. Yeah, I think Jane makes a good point that, you know, the biggest shoes hopefully will be that overflow parking that a lot of restaurants need, and they already do have their own, you know, handicap spaces that are adequate for the space that they have for the restaurants and the other commercial businesses, so, you know, I'm kind of in favor of waiting to see, but certainly, if someone would like to make a motion, or, you know, the rest of the board would like to weigh in, if you'd like to do that, you know, that's fine with me. What is everyone else's thoughts? Chris, do you have any thoughts, one way or the other?
Well, I'm okay holding off. I mean, you know, like Jane said, you know, if it's already graded appropriately and it seems like, if it's needed, it would be an easy fix down the road, or an easy modification down the road, and it might be best to just kind of see if we need the extra spaces for that.
Russ?
Yeah, I agree doing the work ahead of time, and let's monitor it, and I'd be willing to go that route.
Hey, Dane?
Yeah, I'm going to go ahead and agree with myself and still think that's a good idea.
All right, Mike?
I'll agree with Dane.
All right. And Jeff?
When we say monitor it, what do we mean by that? I mean, how, how long will we be monitoring it for?
I don't really know, I couldn't answer that.
If we really see that the thing is overwhelming and it really needs it, I think we'll get notice it, you know, pretty soon. I think the big question is going to be how much utilization is it really going to get?
Right. Yeah, no, I'm all fine for it, as long as the monitor will actually work.
Right. Sue?
I'd just like to make a statement. This parking spot was put in place not for the purpose of the trails, but for the purpose of our commercial tourist district, restaurants, shopping, et cetera, and that's what the residents voted on at the town meeting. So to say that this is specifically for the trails is inaccurate, so I just wanted to correct the record.
Yeah, I don't think Jane really said that, and I think she said that it may be used for the-
Right, I don't think I said specifically, I'm sorry if you understood it that way. But what I did say was I thought that perhaps if that space is utilized, it may be for somebody accessing the trails, since the restaurants are across the street and they do have handicap accessible spaces. So that wasn't my intent to say that this was specifically being built for the trails, so sorry about that.
No, as long as it's clarified, thank you, Jane.
You're welcome.
All right, thank you. Anyone else have any comments before we go to the public? Jane, do you want to see if we have any calls from the public about this?
Yes.
Good evening. Is there anyone on the public line that would like to speak to the five oh one Main Street Parking Lot Project? Good evening, is there anyone on the public line that would like to speak to the five oh one Main Street Parking Lot Project? The silence is overwhelmingly supportive.
All right, sounds good. Could I have a motion then to close the public hearing?
I'll vote Jeff.
Okay, Jeff, thank you. A second?
Second, Chris.
Okay, thank you. Sue, how do you vote?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Russ?
Yes.
Dane?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Jane, do you have the motion that we should have for this, to approve this?
Yes, it would be to approve the parking lot proposed for five oh one Main Street as per the plan submitted with the following conditions of approval. One, all construction and improvements shall be in conformance with the plan submitted and approved by the planning board. A copy of the approved site plan shall be onsite or in the possession of the contractor during all times during construction. Two, all state and local zoning bylaws, building codes, and regulations must be adhered to. Three, all other necessary permits must be obtained prior to the start of construction. Four, the site shall be kept in a neat and orderly condition throughout the construction process. Five, exterior construction shall occur only during the hours of seven A M. to seven P M. Monday through Friday, and eight A M. to noon on Saturday. No exterior construction shall occur on Sundays or the following holidays, New Year's Day, Memorial Day, Independence Day, Labor Day, Thanksgiving Day, and Christmas Day. Six, the applicant shall notify the planning department forty-eight hours prior to the start of construction. Seven, an emergency contact phone list with at least two names and numbers on it be supplied to the Sturbridge Police Department and Planning Department to be used by dispatchers in the case of an off-hour emergency prior to the start of the project. The list must be updated whenever necessary for the duration of the project. Eight, all erosion and sedimentation controls shall be installed as shown on the plan and inspected prior to the start of work. Nine, a pre-construction meeting shall be held at least one week prior to the start of work. Present shall be the applicant, contractors, and other appropriate designees, including town planner, D P W. director, police chief, buyer chief, building inspector, or designee. The purpose of the meeting shall be to discuss the construction process, appropriate traffic and safety control measures during construction, stockpiling of materials, and inspection of erosion controls. Ten, an asphalt must be provided for all site work, including plantings, when the work has been completed. And I would recommend a new number eleven, the grading plan shall be altered so that the second parking space on the easterly side of the parking lot shall be graded to accommodate an additional A D A compliant parking space. Parking lot use shall be monitored, and the second space on the westerly side shall be striped and marked as an A D A compliant space if needed.
Very good, thank you. Would someone like to make that motion?
So moved, Sue.
Thank you, Sue. Second?
Second, Mike.
Okay, Mike, thank you. Sue, how do you vote?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Russ?
Yes.
Uh, Dane?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Great, thank you. And thank you, Jane, for all the work you did to get that- Uh, Jane?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Very good, thank you all. Okay, next item on the agenda is an update on the codification project. Renew, renumber and clean up the zoning bylaws. Jane, do you want to go over that?
Yes, so we are done. Eight months ahead of schedule, we are done. I knew the board was anxious to have this on the annual Town Meeting, so we worked really hard, to be honest, to get this done. And I have the warrant article draft being reviewed by Town Council now for the appropriate language, and we still have time to hold the public hearing on April 13th, which will be two days shy of our deadline to provide recommendations on zoning articles. So at this time, I would like to ask the Planning Board to vote to serve as petitioner for the proposed renumbering and revision of the zoning bylaws, and forward the same to the Board of Selectmen to begin the public hearing process. The Board of Selectmen does have a meeting on April 4th, so if they did the passback that evening, we would be well situated to hold the public hearing.
Very good, thank you. Could we have such a motion, please?
So moved, Sue.
Thank you, Sue. A second?
Second, Jeff.
Okay, Jeff, thank you. Sue, how do you vote?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Russ?
Yes.
Jane?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Great, thank you. And thank you, Jane, for all the work you did to get that thing done and on moving along. I really appreciate it.
You're welcome. I'll be glad to get it off my desk.
All right. Next item we have is the Town Planner update.
So really, not too much. As all of you know, we did have the ribbon cutting for pilot travel last week, and it was actually very nice. Both Russell and Charlie were able to attend, and Jeff and I attended as well with Mike Supernov from the Board of Selectmen, and they've really done a very nice job there. We were very impressed with the whole project, so that was nice to see. And then, really, the only other thing I have is the next meeting is April 13th. We'll have the continuation for the Fifth Hill East subdivision. We'll have the floodplain zoning amendments that we were supposed to have this evening, but the Sturbridge Evening News failed to publish the legal notice. And we will have the codification, so hopefully, they will publish that legal notice. If they don't, then we will be done until a special Town Meeting in the fall. So we've been having a little bit of issues with some of the notices not being published. So Janay has set up a kind of a confirmation process now with the newspaper, so hopefully this will solve some of the issues we've been having. We'll hope for the best.
Very good. Yes, Sue?
Jane, I was wondering, with newspapers becoming a more dated means of communicating, is there another way that we're moving towards the question of towards notifying the public?
Yeah, so actually, I believe it was a law that was passed last year that all legal notices also have to be published electronically. So when they get sent into the paper, they're actually published in this, I'll call it a clearinghouse, where you can go and you can view all of the public hearing notices for all the surrounding towns. I know in our local paper that I receive, in my hometown, they actually put the legal notice, or the, excuse me, the website of that, that website in the paper, so that you can go there as well. So, but they haven't totally gotten away from the newspaper, because I think maybe some people can't get on the internet, or don't have a computer, or don't want to get on a computer. So I think we have to do it both ways probably for some time to come.
Because sometimes it's a problem, you know, with that link and with the printed copy. Just curious where we head home. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Very good, thank you. Okay, next we have old and new business. Sue, do you have any old or new business?
I don't know what that is.
Okay, Chris? Nope, I don't have any. Great. Russ?
Nope, also.
Okay. Uh, Jane?
No, but kudos to Dean and Janay for the codification efforts.
Very good, thank you. Mike?
Uh, none, no.
Uh, Jeff?
Nothing.
I don't know what that is.
Okay. Other than, you know, we had that request to look at the writer's first refusal on that property at Fifth Hill, and apparently, you know, the Board of Selectmen has been interested in finding out more of the opportunity to use that. So I just wanted you to be aware that, you know, that there is some activity to see whether or not, you know, trails might be something that would be feasible on the site, and I believe the community preservation of people are actually moving forward about the possibility of acquiring that. So I just wanted people to be aware of that. And other than that, I don't have any old or new business. Anyone else have anything they'd like to add? Okay, then, motion to adjourn?
So moved?
I'll move.
Sue?
Thank you, Sue.
Second, Jeff.
Jeff, thank you. Sue, how do you vote?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Russ?
Yes.
Jane?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
I vote yes. Very good, thank you all. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Good night. Night.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff.